Welcome to Soundside and welcome to KUW's District Dash. I'm Libby Denkman alongside KUW politics reporter David Hyde. There are seven city council races up for decision this November, and we've invited all of the council candidates to answer the questions voters most want addressed. But we know you're busy, so we're getting you those answers in 30 minutes. And that's why we call it a dash. It does go fast. If a candidate goes overtime for an answer, you will hear this. Or this. That ferry captain and that seagull are busy voters and they would like us to stay on the clock. So today, we're headed to District Three, which will soon stretch from the Central District to Eastlake, including Capitol Hill, First Hill, Leschi, Mont Lake, and Madison Park. Welcome to the candidates vying to represent District Three. Transportation Advocate Alex Hudson, hello.
Hello.
And cannabis entrepreneur Joy Hollingsworth, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
So this was the closest race of all the council districts in the primary. These two candidates were separated by fewer than 100 votes. So we're excited to help get voters more information to make their general election decisions. And let's get to the first question.
All right, Alex Hudson, let's start with you. Incumbent District Three Council Representative Shama Sawant's been in there for around a decade. She's made a lot of headlines for stuff like raising the minimum wage or her push to raise the minimum wage here in Seattle. But if one of you is going to win and the district is going to head in a new direction. So if you could name just one way in which you think that you would be significantly or somewhat different than Shama Sawant?
Yeah, I spent almost five years as the Executive Director of the First Hill Neighborhood Organization, which means that I spent five years working directly with people in my community to identify the issues that were most important to us, stay in communication across our differences, and come up with solutions that make people's lives better. So I have a lot of experience working at that kind of neighborhood or geographic level. And I'm excited about the opportunity of providing really excellent constituent services by listening to folks, by being responsive to folks, and by really prioritizing the needs and the solutions that people in District Three are so hungry for.
Great. Joy, same question. Name one way where you feel like you'd be different compared to incumbent Shama Sawant?
Yeah, absolutely. Look, 39 years in the district, and I've seen how public policy has impacted a lot of the people and the communities that unfortunately have fallen through the gaps. And it's going to be us to prioritize local policies and being hyper-focused on neighborhood by neighborhood. So just because we pass a policy at City Hall doesn't mean that it fits for all these neighborhoods. And it's important that a lot of the communities that live within the neighborhoods, they have their own unique needs. And so it's going to be about connecting people to the 45 city departments, to the 15,000 employees that we have in the city of Seattle, and being able to be transparent, to be responsive, to be connecting with people, and to amplify their voices to our city.
Joy Hollingsworth, you have emphasized the need to increase Seattle police staffing levels to reduce 911 call response time. And part of that recruitment effort, you've said, is to dial back the city council's critical tone about policing. What do you mean by that? And what specifically would you do differently to improve SPD recruitment?
Yeah, we've had, for the last couple of years, we've had a $30,000 bonus for new police officers. And that has not increased our recruiting efforts for SPD. So a couple of things. Number one, as you mentioned, the tone of the council needs to change. We also need to have better relationships with our communities. I come from a community that has been unfortunately ravaged by a lot of gun violence, a lot of activity that's happened in our community that wants some type of relationship with police. They don't want warriors going out on the street. They want more of that guardian relationship. And so what we have to do besides the tone is have a contract that also combines accountability and transparency as well for our police department. But we also need to reestablish better relationships in our community. Before the Badge is a great program that before people get their badge, they have to go through community-sensitive training. Like to ramp that up as well as we're recruiting more officers for our community.
Alex Hudson, you have said greater accountability and cultural reforms at the Seattle Police Department will improve recruitment. You also told KUW that you do not agree with the city's goal of hiring 1,450 deployable officers. Why? And what's your alternative?
Yeah, I think the metric that I'm the most focused on is response time. So we can have numbers that we throw out there, but really what people are expecting is that if they need help or they see someone who needs help, that you can pick up the phone and make a phone call, and a person who is able to provide a real solution will show up. And so we have had a very difficult time, like every city in this country, hiring, recruiting, and retaining police officers. And I don't think that that means that we should have to wait for the known public safety solutions that are out there, like having mental and health providers, having drug addiction specialists, having social workers who are available on call. Right now, we have two crisis teams, but we can't deploy them until a police officer goes there first. That creates a bottleneck to the help that we all want and prevents people from getting the care that they need.
Alex Hudson, follow-up for you. Do you agree with Joy Hollingsworth that the city council, the current city council's tone and rhetoric has harmed recruitment at SPD?
I think there's a lot of reasons that we haven't been able to recruit and retain police officers at SPD. I think some of that has to do with kind of our cultural narrative around policing. I think that some of that has to do with the culture within the department itself. I think we've all seen some of these recent examples of police officers falling well short of the high standard of professionalism and decorum that the taxpayer should expect of them. And I think that that creates a real barrier to young people who want to step up to serve.
Joy Hollingsworth, you heard Alex Hudson there reference some of the incidents that have fallen short of standards. Incidents like the jokes about John V. Condula's death, displaying a black teenager's memorial, tombstone in a break room. 30 seconds to you. What should the council do about these cultural problems at SPD?
Yeah, one of the things is when we're looking at a new contract is having, you know, certain places of accountability, subpoena power, other pieces of relationship where they have to be required to actually go into communities to have relationship-building priorities as well. We also need to take a really big look at SPOG and ensure that, you know, they don't have the protection that they and free range that they usually have with accountability as well. There's a number of things, but the tone definitely needs to shift.
I just want to ask a follow-up to that for both of you. Specific to the Seattle Police Officers Guild, the union, what can the council do? What can you do to improve the relationship, I guess, between the city and the union vis-à-vis its new contract or anything else? What can be done? Yeah.
Alex Hudson, first.
Yeah, as someone who's run organizations for over a decade, I know that the culture and what is permissible with an organization starts at the top. And so the leadership at SPOG, I think, is falling well short of the standards that we expect from our police department. So as we're negotiating the contract, I think that we just need to be really clear about what the taxpayers expect and should be getting.
Joy Hollingsworth, same question.
Yeah, for me, it's about Before the Badge program. It's a phenomenal program that connects communities, officers who are, before they go into training, to community-sensitive programs where they're connecting with communities before they're in crisis. So they can be able to see, you know, different communities that are in, before they're in crisis, to develop that relationship. The second piece, like we've talked about, is a contract that has accountability and transparency and relationships and doesn't give them the power to be able to, you know, go over and navigate certain things that they shouldn't. So more accountability and transparency.
Alex Hudson, we're sticking with the general topic of public safety and crime for just one more question. As Libby mentioned at the beginning, there's just a few votes between the two of you in the primary, 89 votes. So we're trying to underscore the differences, or hopefully you will help us underscore the differences. So I want to ask about violent crime. Seattle's seen an increase in homicides over the last year, while in a lot of other cities, I think on average homicides are actually dropping. So why are you, as opposed to your opponent, the right person to be on council at this time to help address that issue?
Yeah, I bring a real sense of urgency around effective and progressive solutions. I've helped to bring people together, to pass legislation, and make investments in things that are already making our lives better. And we know what those solutions are, right? We need to get people inside. We need to connect people with recruitment and recovery programs so that they can get on a better pathway. And when we're doing that, we're going to be able to use our limited police resources at a better way to be able to really focus on violent crime and start clearing cases. We know that that is the biggest deterrent to people committing crime is a belief that that crime will get solved. And so if we're using our limited police resources to focus on that, that will be in and of itself a deterrent, as well as the kind of upstream solutions that we know we need to keep our kids busy and engaged and focus on their positive future.
Same question, Joy Hollingsworth. Why are you the right person to help address this issue, specifically violent crime?
Yeah, a lot of the activities, unfortunately, that are happening in our city are committed by middle school kids and high school. And so that entails to me that, number one, they need something to do. Positive engagement, connection, get off social media, and back into our community centers, after-school programs, and in-school mentorship. The second piece to that is I went on a ride-along. We only responded to Priority One calls. That officer could not get to Priority Two calls and Priority Three calls. The East Precinct only had 12 officers that night who were riding in pairs. And so that means six total police cars for the entire East Precinct. And a sexual assault that happened here in the University District was Priority Two called. They could not get to that in 11 hours. And so when I'm calling for more first responders, it's not only people responding to Priority One calls, it's detectives, it's the gun violence prevention programs that are within our department that create and prevent a lot of activity from happening as well.
We're midway through our dash here, so we're going to take a breather and have a palate cleanser question. 15 seconds. First to you, Joy Hollingsworth. If you have a free afternoon in your district, somehow the next debate gets canceled and you're able to just do what you want, how would you like to spend a free afternoon in your District Three?
Okay, a debate will never get canceled, but if it did...
We can dream.
Okay, we can dream. If it did, it would be a walk to Volunteer Park. We'd head over to, like, plum, I'm vegan, and then Hello, Robin for, I love to eat. And then Hello, Robin for some cookies. And then we would do a stroll around the neighborhood with my dog Santana. So something real simple and easy, and just enjoying the views and vegan food.
Nice. Alex Hudson, what's your ideal afternoon if something got taken off your calendar?
I'm envisioning that this happens in July or August. And I really like to take, with my kiddo, we like to get on the number-two bus. We joke, and we call it the Beachhead Direct, because it's door-to-door service from our house to Madrona Park Beach. And sometimes we stop in Madrona and pick up a peek-pick at the library there and then get back on the bus and then go down and enjoy an afternoon at the beach.
Very nice. All right, let's talk about housing. Alex Hudson, do you support building more market-rate multifamily housing, including apartment buildings, in every neighborhood in District Three to increase the housing supply? Yes or no? And please explain your answer.
Yes, absolutely. We know that the city of Seattle needs to create hundreds of thousands of new units of housing in order to be able to catch up with the projected growth. There is nothing that is more important than ensuring that every person has a safe and affordable place that they can live and that no one sleeps on our streets. And in order to be able to do that, we're going to have to increase the amount of housing that's available in more places. We're going to have to make it faster, easier, and cheaper to deliver housing. And we're going to have to invest in housing across the income spectrum. I've spent over a decade of my career working in the issues of housing. I'm on the board of an affordable housing provider. I've helped organize in my neighborhood to keep affordability at the forefront of the growth that we were experiencing. And I know that this is a fundamentally critical kitchen-table issue for people across our district.
Joy Hollingsworth, same question. Do you support building more market-rate multifamily housing, including apartment buildings, in every neighborhood in District Three to increase the housing supply? Yes or no? And please explain your answer.
Yes, absolutely. Look, I live in the Central District, and we turned our house into a triplex back in 2001, when my grandmother could not afford a lot of the affordability that was going on in our city. It took us three months to get a permit, 15 months to turn that house from start to finish. And there's a lot of people, whether you're a renter, homeowner, you're trying to age in place, where you can be able to add to the affordable housing piece here in our city to add an A to you to your backyard or convert your house into a duplex or triplex. A lot of people just did not know how, and they didn't have the technical assistance to do that. And so besides streamlining our permitting process, also giving technical assistance to people if they want to be able to transition their house so they can age in place as well, we have to build all types of housing within our city and all over. So we want to look at other places in addition to District Three that can be able to absorb some of the growth that's happened in our city as we welcome it. But we definitely need to ensure that we have it spread out all throughout the city as well.
Duplexes and triplexes, that includes apartment buildings in every neighborhood?
Absolutely.
Alex Hudson, critics have said that new development isn't always affordable for longtime residents of District Three. How would you respond to that, or how would you mitigate that issue?
Yeah, this is a basic lesson in supply and demand, right? We have not kept up the supply of housing to meet the demand. And so we have asked people who want a place to live to play a very cruel game of musical chairs. And so because we don't have enough chairs, they get ripped out and people are left struggling, moving away, or extraordinarily rent-burdened in our city. So it's very important that we just keep up with the growth and supply that housing for folks.
Joy Hollingsworth, same question. Critics say that new developments aren't affordable for longtime residents of District Three. How would you respond and mitigate that issue?
Yeah, we've been focused on building a lot of single, you know, single housing or the studio apartments. And we have not been really good at building a lot of family housing, three, four-bedroom units that create an opportunity for families to afford to live in Seattle. You would be hard-pressed to find a four-bedroom par. I don't even know if they even exist unless they're a townhome, right? And so we have to do a better job of building three, four-bedroom units, not townhomes, but flats, able where it's, you know, if you're a senior or a family with a toddler, those houses are more, you know, desirable.
All right, Joy Hollingsworth, we'll stay with you. Homelessness is the top issue this year for voters. I think it was the top issue for last year and the year before that probably as well. Seattle now spends around $100 million per year on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, which has taken the lead to a regional response to homelessness with some mixed results recently. The head of the agency stepped down, and a key plan to end unsheltered homelessness in downtown Seattle essentially failed. So is it time for the city to reevaluate its support for the agency? And if not, how would you hold the King County Regional Homelessness Authority responsible and accountable, sort of, moving forward to improve things?
Yeah, first of all, fully support the Regional Homeless Authority. It's new. It's something that, you know, is only in its infant stages, and we have to stick with it. But a couple of things that we have to address are there are different categories or the different lanes for people experiencing homelessness. It's affordable housing issue. We have a mental health crisis we're seeing right on our street. We have, unfortunately, people that have substance drug disorders as well. And then we have people preying on vulnerable people within those encampments and communities. That's a public safety issue. So you take the public safety issue out, you let our first responders handle that. The other three buckets is, number one, we have to centralize a location for people to be able to connect with resources. We've seen that in Houston, where they connected 100 providers. On average, it took a homeless vet before that 700 days to get connected to housing. But when they streamlined it for 100 people, it took 32 days. And so if we can centralize a lot of our resources and then have measurable goals and accountability on every single level where all the service providers have the same metrics of improvement, we can be able to solve homelessness quicker and faster.
Alex Hudson, same question. Is it time for the city to reevaluate its $100 million support for the agency? If not, what do you do?
No, I don't think it's time. I fully support KCRHA. And turns out that creating a whole new government to solve the most entrenched issue in our economy is pretty difficult. And so I think it's not time for us to walk away by any means. But we do need to make sure that KCRHA is focused on the solutions that work. Right now, outreach workers who are in our city can be having interactions with people who are unsheltered and have less than 10 shelter beds to offer. So of course, this is not creating a solution where we're getting people inside because we don't actually have any real resources. So we need to create a lot more focus on immediate shelter for folks right now to get them off the street and inside. We need to focus on transitional and temporary housing solutions, like tiny homes. And we need to focus on the issues that are undercurrent of the trauma of homelessness itself by providing people with access to drug addiction support, with mental health counseling, with trauma-informed care so that that person can get on a pathway to a better future.
Alex, follow-up, staying with you on homelessness. Since taking office, Mayor Bruce Harrell has stepped up encampment removals. When is it appropriate for the city to remove homeless encampments, if ever?
I think that we need to, like, the goal should be that people don't sleep outside. And so we want to have a focused and intensive approach to meeting that goal. And so that means that, you know, we connect people with a better pathway. So I think that it's important that we're always focused on encampments, that we're always focused on bringing people inside. And the way that we do that is providing an actual alternative, providing housing, providing stable housing. And that is what connects people from outside to inside.
Joy, same question. When do you support encampment removals, if ever?
Yeah, it's prioritizing ones that are next to schools, I think, is really important. And parks that are next to schools, that, you know, we have to be hyper-focused on connecting people to resources in those. The second thing is how we did, how we connected people at City Park. You know, that was a prime example of our lead program, being the traffic controller of connecting people to resources. Not saying, hey, everyone gets a shelter bed, but maybe some people need to get drug addiction resources, mental health resources. Some people needed beds. Some people needed a voucher. They were the traffic controller for that.
Alex, just a follow-up. Joy Hollingsworth mentioned schools, some specific locations. Do you have any locations in mind where you say, yeah, that's an incompatible space for a homeless encampment?
Yeah, my kiddo went to Meany Middle School, and there was an encampment in the park right next to her school. And she had to walk by it every day in order to get to school from the bus. So clearly, we want to make sure that our schools, that our parks, are places that are safe and accessible to all people. And that means that we should prioritize people who are living there to get connected with services first.
Let's talk about displacement. Alex Hudson, you and your opponent have both said you favor rent stabilization over rent control policies. Yet even with laws on the books in Seattle, like requiring 180 days' notice for rent hikes and relocation assistance, many longtime residents of District Three are being priced out of their neighborhoods. What new policies do you propose to prevent displacement?
Yeah, I'm a lifelong renter myself, so I, and I have a family. So I know what it feels like to be wondering about what's going to happen when that lease increase comes and whether or not this is going to be the one that makes it so that I can't easily live in a community I want to live in anymore. So I deeply identify with this. I think it's clear that what we need is more housing, and we need that housing to be regulated. We need that housing to be able to be affordable. So if we are producing enough housing at this scale to meet people's needs, we'll be able to bring the cost curve down. The city of Minneapolis just did this. By loosening up zoning and investing in affordability, they have less inflation in the city of Minneapolis than we do across the nation, which means that they have bent the cost curve of our biggest expense, housing. So it is not just a fantasy that this is possible. This has been proved in a city right, you know, very similar to Seattle, that we can bring down the cost of housing by investing in just more of it.
Joy Hollingsworth, same question for you, stepping in here a little bit. You and Alex Hudson have both said you support rent stabilization. Seattle has some stabilization laws on the books already. What new policies do you propose to prevent displacement?
Yeah, okay, so for me, it's about public safety. Meaning if an apartment unit and their developers, who are typically in Seattle, they're out of town. I'm not talking about small landlords that have a couple of units. We're talking about like these big investors that, these apartment buildings. They're paying so much money for the broken glass and different activity that's happening around their building, and they're not absorbing that cost. Remember, these are like venture capital firms. They're passing that on to their tenants. And so every year, we see rent increases go up. We see our insurance rates go up, unfortunately. And so that's one way which we can help curb the costs of affordability in our city. The second piece is helping first-time homebuyers. You know, in Seattle, we do not build enough family housing, like flats, condos. Those have to be speeded up significantly so people can be able to have generational wealth within their city, to be able to invest, to move out, transition, if they want to buy a home, if they want to invest in that way in which they're able to move into a long-term, stable, you know, unit condo as well.
Alex Hudson, the outgoing city council member for District Three, Shama Sawant, introduced a rent control measure that would have kicked in if Washington state law preventing such policies were to change. You told KUW that you were a maybe on supporting that Sawant measure, but of course, when you're on the council, there's no maybes. How would you have voted on the rent control proposal and why?
There's always a maybe because you don't have to vote on something until you get it right. That's the thing about the legislative process, is that we create the bills that come before us. They don't just pop about in nowhere, so...
So how would you have changed it?
Yeah, I think that it's clear that what we need is to make sure that we're not limiting supply. And so rent stabilization, especially rent control policies, have been shown to limit the amount of supply and make it really difficult, especially for more nimble housing providers, to do that. And so I would want to be focused on one that wasn't, that was also increasing the availability to deliver housing.
Joy Hollingsworth, you told KUW that you were a flat no on Sawant's rent control measure. Why?
Yeah, I would want to sell people on a policy that would not be implemented on a false dream, not performative politics. And so my first thing was to be, go to our housing department and figure out how we streamline permitting. So it doesn't take a developer 12, 15 months to get a permit, and their costs go up, to where they can get it in three, four months very fast so they can be able to build housing a lot faster. A policy that we could be able to streamline that a lot faster for solutions to build more housing.
Moving on to the lightning round?
Lightning round.
Yeah, okay, this is it. The lightning round. Coffee shop question. So these are one-word answers. Coffee shop question to start. Which of the three Vs, Victrola, Vivaci, Vivaci, or Cafe Vita?
Well, I know the owner of Cafe Vita, so it'd be Cafe Vita for me. But all three, but Cafe Vita.
I have a Cafe Vita.
Two for Vita, okay. One of these is no longer physically present, I think, in District Three, but Stranger or Capitol Hill Blog? Joy.
Capitol Hill Blog, for sure.
The Stranger.
There's some differentiation. Okay. Who did you vote for in the 2021 mayor's race? Alex Hudson.
Lorena Gonzalez.
Bruce Harrell.
How about the 2021 city attorney's race?
Ann Davidson.
Nicole Thomas Kennedy.
Do you support expanded use of automatic enforcement cameras in District Three to help protect pedestrians? Joy Hollingsworth.
Potentially, especially on Lakeside Avenue, Lakeview Avenue. Yes.
Okay, and then some budget and taxes questions. Fun place to end here. Seattle's forecasting big budget deficits starting in 2025, and a work group recently suggested some new tax ideas to help fill the gap. So these are all yes or no's. A high-pay CEO ratio tax.
Yes.
Yes.
A city inheritance tax.
Maybe.
Yes.
A tax on vacant property.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Oops, sorry.
And a traffic congestion tax.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Did you want to do the brewery question?
You do it.
Oh, Alesian Brewery or Standard Brewing? Stumped? Let's go Hudson first.
I don't really drink alcohol too much, so I don't really know.
That's a neither for Alex Hudson?
Meteor Brewery, it's Black On on 23rd in Cherry.
Hollingsworth with an alternate brewery. Well, now we have one minute for candidate closing statements. We flipped a coin ahead of time. Alex Hudson, you go first.
Absolutely. It is an honor and privilege to ask voters in District Three if I can represent them. I am a proven progressive with a very long track record of bringing people together to stay really focused on the issues that are in front of us, and most importantly, to bring solutions that are already making people's lives better. I believe that the city of Seattle is the most beautiful place in this entire country and that there is no reason why we can't also be the best. We can make it so that everybody has a safe, affordable place to live and that no one sleeps in our streets. We can make it do better than allowing people to suffer on the sidewalks with untreated illnesses and misery. And we can make it so that we have great transit and awesome parks, and the libraries are full, and our kids are optimistic, and our old people can rest. But it is going to take an extraordinary effort to start bringing some of these solutions together. And so that's why I'm excited about my decade of experience doing exactly that, to start from day one.
Joy Hollingsworth, you get the last word.
Yeah, so we're not a sleepy city anymore. Seattle, we are in this awkward teenager phase where we're trying to figure out what type of identity do we want to be? What type of adult are we going to be? And I got into this race because of public safety, our response to homelessness, focusing on our infrastructure, the small businesses that were ravaged during COVID-19, our housing, our affordability, and most importantly, our youth. For us to reprioritize what it means for young families to grow up in this city, to raise children and have the coolest childhood like I had with our Sonic... childhood like I had with our Sonics and our vibrant city and playing at parks. And, you know, we didn't have Apple AirPods when you went by someone and you said hello. Like, you were able to look someone in the eye and say hi. And so that was, how are we going to build a home? How are we going to not just be focused, hyper-focused on building a city, but building a home? And I would be honored for the residents of District Three to choose me as their representative and earn their vote.
I think that this was the first debate with not a single clock violation. So thank you both. No seagulls, no fairy horns. Incredible work, both Alex Hudson and Joy Hollingsworth, your candidates for District Three on the Seattle City Council. Really appreciate you both coming in. And you can hear all of our district dashes on the Soundside Podcast, and please look for David Hyde's reporting on kuw.org. For David Hyde, I'm Libby Dankman. Happy voting, everybody.